So one and we are calling this meeting of the Mont Vernon School for a two quarter. Uh, we are going to kick off with public input, one of two. We are also accepting public comment from our virtual audience this evening. If there's anyone in the virtual audience who wishes to speak during public comment. Um, we just will allow in person um guests to speak first um for three minutes apiece. Then we would um we would rotate over to our guest uh virtual speakers on Zoom. So if you are on Zoom and you would like to speak, uh we just ask that you raise your virtual hand, enter your name into the avatar and profile. Uh while speaking, please turn your camera on and say your full name and town of residence. And then when you're complete, you'll have three minutes to speak. Do we have one on Zoom?
We do not.
Okay. So thank you. All right. You can go ahead then and move right into our consent agenda. There are thirteen items on the consent agenda this evening. Did anyone have any questions or comments about the principal's report uh facilities update? Those things treasurer's report, budget transfer, or draft minutes. You good there? Okay. Oh, sorry.
I have questions on it. I think I've asked this before. So I apologize if I'm barking up the tree here. When it comes to the treasury report, I'm gonna scroll down. Has to do with just payments made to people and I'll just I'll use Tom because he's here and I'm gonna pick on like. One of his expenditures.
Happy New Year.
Yeah.
Thirty nine dollars, I mean it wasn't a big deal. But it just said, public lighter thirty nine. Is it, is there any way that we could just somehow say? Public lighter thirty nine dollars supplies or travel reimbursement or whatever that line item is. Because there are some in there, like there was a, I think a teacher had one, it was like fifteen hundred and thirty nine dollars or something. And I'm guessing that's for a.
Course PD.
A course. Then.
But we can move back some back.
But just if if that could be denoted with with fifteen thirty nine, whatever the guy was. And then course reimbursement, that would be fine. But it just seems to be a. Uh it's not a black hole, it's just like for me to be really nice to be able to scan down and go, okay, okay, okay. Something like that.
Do you think, uh oh, sorry, I don't wanna do that.
No, that's okay. I just, I was wondering, are these, these are outstanding?
Apologize, I can't find them.
Sixty, sixty-three, sixty-four, and it's the, what are they called, the like? They're stale, yeah, stale check.
Yeah, so.
Well, they're just checks that have been written to folks and they just haven't cashed them yet. So we have to try to contact people to get them to cash them. I think that's what you're referring to.
Oh, I'll try to find it, we can keep moving here.
Oh, it has a process, like I might wonder it to you is, um so remember, I don't know if you remember. But um Jess and I both get the manifesto, we get the detailed reports.
Right.
But I wonder if it might be, if we could maybe talk about a threshold where anything above a certain dollar amount that that denotation gets. To the full board, would that be?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm not trying to make work for anybody you guys doing that, but it just, it seems in that report, it's just be nice to have that.
You wanna make sure you're comfortable that you get the information.
Yeah, I'm gonna get it, I'm not. Thirty-nine dollars or sixty-two dollars, but.
And we added some backup in other districts.
You know, it was postal, so I mean, I get it, we got, we got a mail stuff.
Yeah.
I I get that.
But I think that's what you're referring to. But we can, which page? I think it's in the sixties, Pete, like sixty-four, sixty-three, sixty-four. Sixty-two, there's a couple listed there, page sixty-two from this July.
So by still, you're referring to outstanding checklist?
Yeah, exactly, so I want to pay sixty-two. And I'll use Kara, um fifteen ten, I'm guessing that's.
It's professional development.
Professional development.
So these are outstanding that. So we have to, so we have to try to contact folks.
To get them.
Or to reissue.
It's on the list.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't.
Yeah, that, that, those are checks to folks and they just.
That's fine.
And that would have been, the only thing that would have been for me would be staff uh staff meeting.
Like I said, I'm sure isn't one of all hundred percent justified.
Yeah.
But from a, just a mental.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like even terrorism, I kinda assumed it was professional.
Yeah.
That's the only thing that would be that much. Yeah, yeah. So those have already gone through the whole approval process.
Yeah.
The only reason they're popping up here is because they haven't been cashed yet.
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments or concerns on those items from the consent agenda? Christine, do you wanna highlight anything from the science and curriculum update?
Yeah, I'll speak really briefly to that. Um, we um did deep science work a number of years ago. So this is just um part of our um refresh that we're doing this year to all of our curriculum documents, to make them a little bit more user friendly. Um for the public um uh in our, you know, our community and our families. And um just to uh also make sure all of our updates are um uh go forward to the board for approval. So for kindergarten, fourth grade, um our science curriculum is tightly aligned to um one of the the main resources we use, which is mystery science. Um which um you know, is is very aligned to um NGSS, which are our national science standards and the state infrastructure science standards. Um very minor changes from previous years, mystery science will sometimes um reorganize units slightly or change things in a very minor way. So we've made some updates to better align to the resource that um we're using, but very minor um K four, really just more formatting changes. And um some updates to clean up um the uh K to four materials. Um in um fifth through eighth grade, we use um mostly, you know, our own developed units. And we're kind of, we're finishing up with a science resource and textbook that we used for a number of years, which we're slowly moving away from. Um but in fifth through eighth grade, Bethany did pretty deep work helping to realign. So what's a little tricky and as Mont Vernon ends at sixth grade, we really still have really that sixth through eighth science program. So sixth grade is a a piece of that. Um the way the um NGSS standards are written, sixth through eighth grade is one kind of group. So it's not, this is sixth grade, this is seventh grade, this is eighth grade, it's here's your middle school science and you decide where you'd like to place it. So that's a pretty important thing and Bethany led work um over really the past um two years. So before she left, uh over those uh previous two years, um really, once we had implemented. Um those new standards really looking at realigning and and moving some topics maybe from one grade level to the next. Because uh after teachers had taught the new standards, uh you know, maybe wanting to shift things around and better group things into different ways. So there were a few minor adjustments that were kind of um made, um you know, as we were, you know, we we had our our um science curriculum approval. And then really looking at um adjusting and making some minor switches for topics across grade levels within that succeeding band. So we really wanted to capture um that as well. And um the sixth grade um certainly captures uh the middle school topics that are taught here at Mont Vernon. But you can feel really good that the sixth grade work was done in collaboration with AMS. So it is that one group, so it's a seamless transition for our students as they go into seventh and eighth grade. So sixth grade really uh looks the same here as it does down at AMS, as does, you know, five through eight as well, we work for five through um a K to five as well. Uh so this was really just uh more of a refresh, no major changes. One of our um big um um uh focus with science is really to make sure it's hands-on and engaging. You might remember uh uh probably just a year or two ago, I think it was first grade, Amy LaVoy came to present on science. Uh and really brought science to life and showed how we get kids, you know, really active and up and moving around and deeply engaged in materials. Uh with um supportive budgets, we've been able to purchase every year the consumable materials we need for our labs. So our our students have those hands-on resources and hands-on materials that they need to conduct their lab experiments and to do their labs. Uh so I feel our science program is very strong. Um the the nice piece is as an elementary teacher, you're juggling so many different content areas. And mystery science is very accessible to teachers and to students, but also tightly aligned to standards. So it really gets students excited about being scientists. Um but it also isn't an overwhelming amount of time for our teachers. So they really um have expressed, you know, positive feedback on that mystery science resource and the importance of that, especially. Um the juggling so many things at the elementary level. So I don't know if you have any questions, that's kind of just a brief overview of our science curriculum.
Just quickly with the text that you're moving away from in the upper grades, does that mean that there's going to be? A larger materials request in the future or new?
Most likely not, so sixth or eighth grade science teachers have, um you you know, those books were, you might remember. They were purchased six years ago and we had a six-year subscription to those consumable textbooks. Um the teachers have found that um as they've developed a deeper understanding of the standards and as they add, as they've implemented them. They felt that the textbook is a little confining for them. And they found that the online resources that we provide and that um even the uh Department of Education provides uh discovery. Um education for us for free. So with all of the online resources, they found that that's more flexible and better meets students' needs. So they haven't been deeply using the textbooks um almost as a textbook, they've been using it more of a as a of resource. And they have some copies still, so they were not, they didn't feel strongly about, you know, refreshing or renewing the science textbooks. Really having that focus on hands-on, using funding on having students doing experiments and. Really, you know, getting messy, I know at AMS you may have heard about um the cow heart and lungs we had. There's a really neat video of you, you have an and um pink hearts, then kids have to pick hearts. So that that's really the direction we're moving, trying to move a little bit away from the textbook, um variety of online resources and then really doing hands-on.
Great, thank you.
It was a little gross, but it's kind of cool too.
Question.
Yeah.
I see like in kindergarten, you've got wild weather for three to six weeks, and I guess my thought was. Uh even before I saw this, is like the lake effect, snow and buffalo. How often do are the teachers able to incorporate real-time live weather events? Or science events into their curriculum? Maybe even at the last minute, like, okay, I got AP to snow in Buffalo. And then spend a day or so explaining or how did that happen or why does that happen? It's really, it's kind of bizarre. Because I mean, I got customers out there that they can get four feet and then you drive twenty minutes away and it's four inches.
Yeah.
So it's really a really strange phenomenon, so my question is, how quickly are your staff able to navigate that in and do that?
Uh, um it it happens more on the fly, it's certainly not, as you pointed out, wouldn't be anything written into the curriculum. But as much as we can, we've actually talked about the placement of where we place our units um at certain time periods to take advantage. So for example, um i- if we're doing phases of the moon, we might actually do that in the winter. Because the moon comes out soon, our kids are already in bed by the time in early fall and and late spring to be able to track the phases of the moon and and to do that. So there's certainly um intentional um connections to the world. Uh and you know, if there's something that we need to be doing outside, we've been talked about um solar cookers. We used to do solar cookers in fourth grade, we could only do that at the end of the year because it was the only time it was warm enough for us to be able to build the solar cookers. So um the teachers certainly in planning when they teach certain units, definitely make sure that seasons, whether they're kind of taking, you know. Keeping all of that in mind um for that, as far as other pieces, I think that comes up naturally. So as students might be learning about a certain concept, they might say, hey, but you know, this happened or how, or why did that happen? Or um uh and and one of the nice things about mystery science and really the standards in general, they're phenomenon-based. So they learn about this phenomenon in science and then they, you know, in general. So something um really different um is occurring and they wanna understand why. So it's called mystery science because the kids are trying to understand the mystery around that phenomenon. So um with that, I think it just spurs the curiosity and the questions. So teachers are able to do that, we don't in, you know, we we don't have any sort of um. And and it would be kind of neat to do just almost like current events and how do we pull that into our curriculum in certain, you know, uh specific spots? We don't do that, teachers more on the fly.
Although um we do use sources like Newsela.
Mm-hmm.
That are very current event-based and they they have very current news type things, like the Buffalo thing would definitely be on there. And we have a number of teachers that are currently using, using that on a regular basis. So um not just for science, but for a number of areas like like that, you know.
Okay.
Any other questions there? So can I have a motion, please, to accept consent agenda items one through thirteen? I'll make the motion to accept consent agenda items one through thirteen. Thanks, do I have a second?
Well, second of that.
Great, any discussion? Okay, hearing that all in favor? Thanks.
We were just making sure we didn't forget something.
Did you need a minute or you?
No, no, it's not my fault.
No, it's okay. Um, all right, so we are slightly ahead of schedule, are you okay with that? Okay, so um Miss Stacy, I will turn it over to you.
Yeah, so I think Steve's gonna project the budget presentation. All right, so this is, this is your draft three budget presentation, but this is also your public hearing prep. Um so as we're going through the slides, just uh think of that, of it in that lens. That these, this is your presentation from here and thanks next week. And um and you might wanna think about, you know, how, who's gonna present what. I know typically Sarah, I think you have done the presentation.
Yes, but if anyone is passionate, yeah.
Or wants to take a piece of it, or maybe, you know, some some of the Warren articles or just keep that in mind as we go through. And then maybe after you can decide.
Perfect.
Um, your public hearing is on Wednesday, right, so.
Yeah.
So uh. I am available to make changes to the presentation, answer questions, help or whatnot. But at least this will give you over the weekend and a few days next week.
Yeah, the eleven.
So yeah, if you have any, any changes that okay, want uh made. You can certainly, this is your presentation now that I'm sort of handing off to you that, but I'm happy to make edits and, okay. Add slides, delete slide, whatever you need, I think so.
Next week, I'll see you next week.
The eleven. Is that Wednesday?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure it's Wednesday.
Yeah. At six P M.
So. So, yeah, so here is your operating budget, Warren article. Um and all the language had all the one, this has been submitted to Department of Revenue uh revenue. And they approved everything, so we have dollar changes, that's fine, we can do that, but the language has all been approved by them.
Okay.
So this slide will, next slide, will take out for public hearing. But these are the changes from draft um two to draft three. So we had talked about taking out the transfer of food service because you do have a fund balance um in there. And we're we're tracking okay for this year, we're 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 projecting a loss at this point. But um but Crystal's right on it and is looking to implement some uh some revenue. Building ideas, so she has approval to do like an ice cream. Um like a a sale for ice cream for kids, and I think Tom, she's talked to you about that, the ice cream in the cafeteria. Um and she has some other ideas and she has some ideas for some some cost cutting also for paper goods. Um so, so she's on it. So we're tracking it every month, keeping an eye on on expenses. We do have fund balance uh for food service, should we have a shortfall for this year? Uh so we felt comfortable with projecting for next year, not needing to to do that transfer.
Okay.
So we took that out. Um, we, one of the unknowns from last meeting was the special of transportation. So we we budgeted high based on what we had been provided by our current provider. But then went through the bid process and unfortunately only received one proposal. And for not from our current provider, uh it's from a different provider, then we were concerned about the costing. Uh it looked like it was gonna be higher than what we had budgeted. And so we had a meeting with the provider yesterday, um with Steve and myself and um Meg and Karen Sainsbury from the special ed office. And we're very pleased with how they are doing the costing. Um and have got, received some clarification on how they're doing it as well. So the the short answer to that long explanation is that we only are needing to increase the special ed transportation budget. By three thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars, where we were originally concerned that it was gonna be much more.
Like almost fourteen thousand.
Yeah, yeah, so we're, I know.
We're, yeah.
So we're, we're really pleased.
Um and it's through the bid, we have thirty days to accept the bid, we plan on accepting the bid, it's a very professional organization.
Yeah.
Big company. Um how they, I mean, obviously this is based on what we know.
Yeah.
If the students may or else, this changes where we are now.
Okay.
We were very close in what was budgeted to our estimate we issued from our current venue, thirty-five hundred in this market. Isn't a bad gig, um so I think we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, thank you. So that results in a net loss uh or a net reduction of your um of your budget. Uh eleven thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars, okay?
And who was that food service provider?
Food service is gonna help.
Inhouse.
No, 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 um like broad liner, is it uh Gordon Foods, US Foods, McLean? What do we?
It's a variety.
It's, it's a.
Yeah.
A lot of vendors.
Yeah, a lot of different vendors, we're trying to use some commodities.
And she's looking at state bid.
Yeah.
And this is my number one.
Yeah.
Doing everything she can.
Yeah.
She's on it and she's very, very good.
Yeah.
Now let question.
Yeah, because yeah, she's.
Yeah.
And it's multiple providers for.
Yes, yeah.
All different items, like I think fruits and vegetables will sometimes come from one certain vendor that we get, you know, their local produce. And we get a good price on them and then she'll, you know, for meat, we'll go elsewhere. So um I, i- it's really to service the students, but also looking at costs as well, so she does a really good job.
Yeah, and we're looking at staffing and what, you know, what we really need to have for staffing um in the cafeteria. Like we have, you know, the one full-time kitchen manager and then we have part-time, so we're trying to make sure we're just. We're utilizing that staffing appropriately and not, and just for what we need, so.
Long term, she's gonna take a look at um disposables versus continual use. Um there's things we can do in the food service, I think this is a big place that could actually handle some real plates, real utensils.
Yeah.
We had uh one of our entry discussions, long-term, she's looking at how to control costs and environmental stuff too. We'll see some improvements under here.
So we have uh her particular budget, we we meet every week and then, and she does monthly projections. So we're looking at it constantly and trying to make course corrections if we see something, you know, going up or down, so.
I know that through my line of work, there was a time when I was dealing with schools and they had shifted into a co-op. To buying power.
Yeah.
Yeah, buying stuff, energy buying groups, commodity buying groups, the state bids.
Yeah.
Anything we can do to increase economy, especially this place economy scale purchasing.
Yeah, definitely.
And obviously, SAU wide purchasing also.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just Mont Vernon was purchasing, that would be different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you know, she's even looking at, yeah, okay, you know, what, what do we have available? Um, you know, can we have a chef's choice? You know, and she's looking at, and she's actually been doing that, uh so that, you know, if the food is still fresh and good. But let's use what we have and not, you know, overbuy, so.
Price of nuggets, that's, I don't know.
Yeah.
None significant. Everything.
Yeah. So these, this is, these are the changes, we'll take this slide out, you won't need this for the presentation.
Just a quick question.
Yeah, sure.
On that note, overall, even beyond food service, are we required to, we mean the district? Uh to uh take the lowest bid or best provider?
Are you back on transportation?
Yeah, well, in general, when we go out.
We are not required.
Okay.
And we've been as.
Yeah.
So it's basically whoever can give us the best service or best product and lowest cost. So that doesn't necessarily equate to being the lowest, but, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
We were hoping for more confidence, we didn't get.
Yeah.
Yeah. Three people attend the pre-conference for the specialty transport, and only once a bit. Now, do they do that as a sealed bid?
Yes.
They do as a sealed bid?
Formal bid.
Okay, alright, good.
And we had, we had three providers there, but just once a bit.
I know one of them, so. And one of them was too, uh was too big, where they're on the. Yeah. About the other one, actually I have uh on my notes to call next week, yeah, just to find out, because one of them is a very big provider trying to get into this market. And I was excited to see their, attend a uh pre-bid uh conference, I'm just curious, wanted to follow up. So just curious that in, in general, has the bid's been kind of consistent over the last couple of years in terms of numbers? Providers or?
See, transport, this is our first bid in four years.
Okay.
For special ed. Regular ed was last year.
Yeah, and I could, next time I have a meeting, I can ask my colleagues to see if they put it out, to see if they're getting, um.
Yeah.
Was, you know, we, the post-bid unpacking of the bid was very important, we've really changed our costing by a bit.
Right, yeah.
But I was worried if I, if we didn't get any bid.
Yeah.
That'd be trouble in River City.
But yeah, very professional organization, you had a great meeting, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we felt good about it.
Very much, thank you.
All right, moving on, so this is that same slide you always see with the the changes from FY twenty-three. Operating budget, a current budget to uh proposed, so the total is an eight point one percent increase. It's not much different from the last draft. Um and the the difference from the operating budget to the default is six point seven percent. And then your default to proposed uh is one point one percent. So we'll go through, there's more detail on each of those.
Yeah.
And then, so your major stories, um increase in student services, cost, transportation, student need. The increase in the AMS tuition based on the number of students, members across from people. Uh you made some competitive wage adjustments for non-union employees. Uh inflation, gas prices, utilities, facility service contracts. Uh and the risk management investment in the capital reserves that we've talked about. In facilities, special education and the health. And then this is your salary and benefit budget assumptions. So you're in the third year of the MBEA contract. Um and we talked about the five percent market adjustment for the non-union employees. And then the the uh GMR, uh guaranteed maximum rate for health and dental is a four point one and a one point five. And then the the changes of the, you have to retire, you guys have seen all this before. Uh enrollment projections, that's the same slide, we we're seeing an increase. And this is based on the uh twenty twenty-two NASDAQ report, we'll have that done again. Do you know when it's coming?
No, okay. Yeah, I thought we submitted like October second.
Yeah, we submitted early, so we should, we'll make a note to check up on that, see if we have.
Sure, it's gonna appear. Just a quick note, um we anticipate we're gonna be at two twenty by mid-February. We have two new this week, two new phone calls and one starting online. Building going on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, all right, staffing levels, that's the same, kind of flow through these. All right, and then this is the budget by category chart, they can see the change. And not surprisingly, big, big increase in transportation, student services, silly, those items we talked about. Some for admin, administration, which is um. If that's outside your non-union wages. Uh curriculum, that's primarily salary increases. And then the small amount of food service and technology is actually down, so. And there's some notes underneath.
Thank you. Just making notes bigger.
Yeah.
And and specialties in student services, correct?
Yes, yeah, correct. And then um. The the, the default calculation just just shows how this is done. So we take the current budget, remove the Warren article. And then uh we have to add in special services as those are contractually obligated. And that includes the uh transportation, which is a big, big chunk of that. The increase in tuition, uh the salary and benefits. Um, which is contractual, that's the regular ed piece of that. The SEU apportionment, which is also contractual, and then it's just a small sort of up and down. So it's pretty easy to explain um how how that is calculated. And then this next slide shows really your discretionary. So this is the difference between the default calculation and the proposed, so it's not a big amount. It's a little over eighty-three thousand and most of that. The default calculation and the proposed, so it's not a big amount, it's a little over eighty-three thousand and most of that is. Is those uh non-union salary benefit adjustments, the market rate adjustment, um adjustments that. Are um are included and. Transportation for regular education, which we can't include in.
But we can't change it.
But so unfortunately, if the budget doesn't pass, we have to find that thirteen thousand seven ninety somewhere else.
But if the budget doesn't pass, the other lines are.
Yep.
Subject.
Exactly, yeah. And then um facilities, that is for. A new floor extractor. Um I think we've talked about that and, yep. Um utility cost increases, the preventive maintenance contracts and an increase in property and liability insurance. There's notes down there.
Or whomever.
Or whomever, right.
So when was the last time we operated under default?
It's been a while.
Five, six years.
Yeah.
We have a pretty good track record.
We do, yeah.
Yeah, it was.
That's good.
It was you then.
It used to be. It used to be tough, it was, this district was in default and then. I think this board has done a really good job with communicating and um putting together tight budgets.
Yeah, as soon as John took over as principal, he um, which is very strong outreach for the community and really helped to um. Promote the school more and I think that, it was a slower process, but I think that certainly helped and then again, the boards and. I, I, I do think there's a lot of good level of the community just with how the board has maintained this building. So I think that's helped significantly.
Yeah, definitely. So this is. Your pie chart that shows the distribution of costs. And you can see the big chunk is salary and benefits and then the tuition to Amherst School District, which is. Not directly salary and benefits, but you're paying for the overall education.
And it's just proposed, right? This is the.
Yeah, yeah. And then the um, yeah, the categories and how it's broken out, so it's just a good visual.
And there's no changes in staffing at all, right?
Yeah, yeah, no changes. Alright, and then revenue, so. We haven't in the past talked about revenue at public hearing, but we have talked about it in board meetings, so we can certainly keep this in here. And I'll do per deliberative, uh there's some other charts that I can do, but usually we keep, try to keep it a little bit simpler for public hearing.
One of the things that we did here when we did our community listening session was that the community would like to hear the real, like, the honest truth about it, not just. What's happening that's so great here, so I think that seeing this and that there is a, a reduction.
Yeah.
That it's reality.
Yep.
Um and I think it really makes sense to share at this level, so I would. I would ask to keep it in if everybody's okay with that, I think. Um you know, that was one thing that we had some good feedback on.
Right, okay, absolutely.
This opens the door, you had talked about it at some point, introducing the concept of. The tax rate stabilization. So I don't know if, if you want, I can do a memo to you and give you a printer on it all. And you can use it or not, but someday, doesn't have to, as Amy talked, might not be right now, but sometime during the next year, we can just talk about. A debrief of the budget. Even then. Um but at some point, because when you look at a two hundred thousand dollar reduction of revenue, if you had a tax rate stabilization fund. Of five hundred thousand, you could weather that storm. And even if you did a hundred, it would take in this place. Um that's, you know, sense of, that is sense of the tax rate.
So do you think you would want to talk about that either at public hearing or deliberative, or do you wanna wait till after? Budget process or do you wanna think about it?
I think it would be a good idea to introduce it, at least. Whomever joins us there, I think it would be good to start to get the buzz out there, saying this is something that the board is considering. That sound reasonable?
I'll send you something on Monday.
Yeah, okay.
The statute and stuff.
That would happen in the form of a warrant article that we would start. Is it? Because the number one articles were coming out, do you think now is the time to bring it up or is it more have information?
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a this year thing, it would be introducing the concept this year so that people have a little bit of a heads up, that it might be. Introduced as a warrant article next year.
Do you think it might also sour people more so, the saying, look at all the warrant articles they're doing now and they're gonna ask for another one?
Um I, I don't know that I would even say that it would be a warrant article for next year, just that. There is this ability, um and that it might be something to consider down the line and then it opens the board up to be able to have that conversation. Very transparently, I think. Um so you know, this is something that we've been talking about, it's been introduced and um if it becomes something that's a need, then. We could introduce it as a warrant article in the future.
And it's an okay no. If this community doesn't believe, that's okay. It's, it's not like you won't be asking for money, you'll be asking money to clean your account. And if they don't want the account created, that's, that's all, that's good information. You're just presenting to them, I don't think it's a, you know, I think it's, it's a good thing, um because it, you know, allows stability. And it's savings, but this community, not every community, loses something.
But, but, but to me, to your point though. We have something similar in the capital reserve. We have a capital reserve, so it's not like we're, the concept isn't there, this is just an extenuation.
Yeah, in the concept, and you see how it. So. And the town has, and there's always, that's how, you know, we saw that, that, that in this town, community typically supports the town using this to. Control your, to impact your tax. And so all this statute does is give the same ability that the communities had on the town side, on the school side. That's all it is, and um typically, they like it on the town side.
Well, yeah, it usually takes the peaks and valleys and kind of makes some. Little bumps and dips.
I did. At one of the budget meetings, I reached out to one of the selectmen. From Mount Vernon and talked to them about this. Just asking what their history was. Um so I just seized the opportunity, I do a lot of meetings. But, and we can actually go, I'd actually suggest that you wanna go to a select board meeting, chat with them. I'm happy to do that. See what their philosophy is, but introducing them, you could say, well, we with talent really mirror what they do. We're not trying to. Create adjutants, trying to help.
Right.
That's all we did.
But typically, that would be tied to specific expenditures, though, like you couldn't. Typically, I know it's RSS, which are restabilization funds in, in the utility field, but. We can only use those stabilization funds for certain expenses. Like, they bifurcate, like, we have material operating expenses and we have non-material. We can't use stabilization fund for non-material, we can only use them for proof then when we are hard.
In the memo, make sure I have the statute for you.
Okay.
Um because the statute actually has changed since its inception. It um, it now opens up to be an emergency fund. That if you have four hundred thousand dollars in there and you blow a boiler, I mean, we have a CNA, but if you, towns, towns don't, you can use your tax rate stabilization fund.
Yeah, and then that's where it is, because if you, I'd be concerned what happens if you guys wanna go out and buy a new. I don't know, carpet and. I think my carpet's fine. That's where.
You wanna have a public hearing.
Right, right.
But I will, I'll make sure, George, I'll send it to you all on Monday, I'll work on it this.
Yeah, because those are the type of concerns I've heard about stuff like this. It's like, well, what control do we have over that?
And, and ultimately. If, if you're elected, you know, the elective body has the body politic has the ability. But it's expanded before, it was simply for tax rate stabilization and you could use it emergency, we had to go to the Department of Ed. The commission would have to allow you to use it, I think they solved it, but I'll have it all for you. At least talking points and then I'd love to sometime, we can go to the select board and cover that.
So do you wanna, for public hearing, do you wanna just speak to it and maybe put a slide in for deliberative, or do you wanna slide in for public hearing? Or?
And you can just do it off this slide.
You could, you could just speak to it.
Yeah.
And then you could decide if you wanna beef up deliberative, who could put something in for that.
I think less is more.
Okay, yeah.
And this is the perfect, I mean, it's revenue, you see your ability to.
Yeah. I, I personally think you're gonna need a slide to explain it. You know, what is a, is a tax rate stabilization, stabilization fund? And bullet pointed out as to. You know, like, using that one ninety-five, eight twenty-one numbers. How would that impact? This year's, or next year's budget? So I, I think you're gonna need a slide either way. To kind of walk the taxpayer through. Even myself, what exactly is it, how does it work, how does it operate? Not just talk to this slide with it.
Okay, I don't know how heavy one be this year.
Light?
Yeah, me too. Slide to me is heavier.
Yeah.
As I mentioned, this year, I mentioned, is it's like just saying the board's looking at this and other communities have and we'll have more next year. But just giving.
Maybe just for public hearing and then maybe if we do a slide for deliberative, that.
Or it could be a bullet point on one of the other slides, hey, these are some concepts we're thinking about going forward and that could be. One of the things in more detail to come, but. These are the things that were.
I could put it in the. Letter that goes in the.
You could do that. Good idea.
Future ideas.
Alright, well, once you get that, Sarah, maybe you and I can.
Yeah.
And yeah, work that out.
I'm working on it. This weekend, so.
So then this just talks about the tax. Like impact, so the total appropriation, the change from year to year. That revenue amount and then. Less the adequacy aid and state property tax to get your total tax effort. Um and then to get your tax impacts, which is the change from February twenty-three to twenty-four. You just divide the effort by the valuation for Mount Vernon. To get the dollar eighty-four.
The only thing I could see someone questioning is the revenues that we done. So because then when you go down to, I'm assuming that tax effort is net. Of the appropriation revenue, the adequacy and the property taxes.
Yeah, I can say less.
Yeah, that's my only concern there.
Yeah.
Because I say, how does that flip?
Yeah.
Or even should it be red, just so that people know.
Yeah, because when you look at it, naturally you wanna add up that whole column and because they're all positive.
Cause yeah, well, when you. I struggled with this because you could make those a negative.
Yeah, yeah, but I think, or you have a section with deep, you could still peep in there, but have a.
Do you want them in red?
Or maybe in red, yeah.
I think red would be much more.
And you could just have a note, red. Something along those lines, it's just.
Okay. Sounds like they'll know necessarily what.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alright, everyone knows what red means.
Unfortunately, I see way too often.
Alright, do that. Alright, and then. Going on to facility, capital reserve review, so this is all, this is all of your reserves and balances, you can leave that in there. Or not, but it gives a nice picture of, of what, what you have.
I like it, okay.
So, the students with disabilities fund says balance thirty-two, we don't have. That's not even established yet, correct?
No, it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
The one that is new is the health and dental.
And the tuition one, yeah. The tuition, we're not um asking for.
The tuition's not new.
Yeah.
Oh, that's existing.
But the only right, I know additional is that the dental.
And that's the one we talked at the last meeting, correct? That was concerning, once the premiums are set, we know. There could be a differential between what was projected and what the actual premiums came through, and that's why coverage would come.
Right, yeah.
And we've reduced the contribution to the property maintenance fund from the original time.
Yes, it was fifty and now it's thirty-five, yes, yeah.
So what, I'm just curious, why would we list the, the tax? What's the right phrase, tax mitigation or tax impact?
So we, for, for. The deliberative will have all the warrant articles and it will have the tax impact on each warrant article. For these, these are coming from assigned fund balance, so there's no new taxation. So there's, it's a zero, zero impact for new taxation, because it's coming from prior year fund balance.
Okay, but we do have some community members who argue that with you, so in the past, we have. We have said what the implied non-impact is, what you will not get back. Does that make sense?
Does, I mean, because if you go back to the revenue slide.
There's passion behind that.
I know, because it's true that if.
If you don't do it, you get money back, if you do it, it doesn't hurt you any more deeply, but you don't get relief. So I see the point. So if we can, I mean, if we can somehow capture that, I think that it will, it will make those members of the community. Happy. Okay, to see that information.
New tax impact isn't good enough. You want to know the tax impact if it was, if it's voted down.
Yes. Yes, that's what I remember now.
Because if it's voted down, this goes back.
Yes.
It's like a negative.
That is, that, yes.
So you would like to tell them that they get money back if they vote this down?
I would like that transparency because we have been that transparent in the past and we have a great relationship with our community.
You're a better person than me.
Yeah. It's, it will come up as a question, don't you think, I mean, it's come up as a question. Every year, so I don't anticipate that we won't get asked that question, so I would rather say. I would rather just uphold our transparency here and say this is what it is and.
Basically, if it gets voted down, then your prior year fund balance is greater. And you, that goes to offset, right, the next year's tax.
So.
Right, so.
On the article.
Yeah.
No, correct, correct.
But in the presentation, you would like that.
Yes.
So on the article, it's going to say no new tax.
Yes. That's, yes.
Tax impact. And then go on to say, like, if article is voted down.
Yeah.
You see that credit.
There was, we saw, I know we did it this way last time, because I saw, I was like, why is it negative, because I didn't fully understand how this works last time. I remember seeing that, like, negative.
Can we go back and look at, I mean, I don't have them on my laptop, but yeah, see if I can find them and see if we can find the wording.
And then just when you speak to it.
Yeah.
The reality is. There is less in savings.
Yes.
More risk. More inability to continue the maintenance, continue this, and so it's not just that they're getting money back. They are reducing the financial stability of Mount Vernon Village School District.
Well, it's an opportunity cost, it's either you're gonna take it on your tax rate now.
You're gonna pay a lot more.
Which I always struggle with, this is one of the things when I was at the SAU. I was kind of proponent for, or actually a proponent when they wanted to give a lot of this stuff back. Because they wanted to get the whole thing back, and I'm like, well, wait a minute, guys, we're talking about shortfall, so you're here. And from my perspective, they've already voted for these expenditures in prior budgets. This is just the residual of those, so we've, they've already approved these expenditures, happened, we didn't spend that much, but. Anyway, I don't wanna get on.
Hey, my concern is, I mean, it's great, wonderful, I get it. The people in the room, you will be able to explain this, the people who look at this aren't in the room, is gonna say, oh. I vote this down, I have no money, my.
So what if you have it as a note and you can speak to it? And it's not like something that's confusing for people who aren't there to hear. And the people who are concerned about it will be there.
Right, people who are concerned about it will be, I mean, the flip side is, if the question is asked, if we have the information available, we can provide it. I don't know if we had it in the presentation last year, do you know? Did you raise this one off of that? No, can we go back and look at that?
And it was that deliberative, because we didn't have any revenue information at public hearing. So it was that deliberative.
I mean, what's your feeling on it, do we have the information available? And not included on the slide and, and then if there's a question. I mean, I see your point, George, and it's very valid.
And, and at the end of the day, when you listen, when you talk about what's potentially coming back compared to the overall budget.
Oh, no, I know.
It's like, what are we talking about?
Warrants, I think the warrants are all justified.
And I hear you. I don't wanna intentionally, I don't wanna intentionally. And I hear you. I don't want to intentionally, I don't want to intentionally omit something.
Right.
However, what I've seen is propensity for individuals, any nickel they can get back, they will, in spite of how long term makes sense to do these things, doesn't matter. I'm struggling right now. I get it. But it's short term gains for, it's very short sighted thinking in my, in my regard. And when I look at the total impact, it's negligible. It's, it's a rounding issue. That's all it is.
I think I'm with you. I mean, this, this S A U, this community is crazy. The transparency that you do.
My opinion.
So commendable. That, but I think if we can add then one more bullet, impact. That this maintain the first one, property maintenance fund continues the um funding in upkeep of twenty million dollars with the property for students with disability funds, um reduces risk.
Hmm.
Right.
And I mean, I can make this stuff up.
Yeah.
That happened, but as long as if we're going to do that, let's have it. So.
Like justification, yeah.
Just a quick bullet there, because if you're gonna, if you're gonna, we need the why there.
Yeah, why are we asking?
Because if you're gonna bag it, then you're gonna say, okay, you're gonna, you're risking maintenance, you're risking cutting, you're risking freezing, you're risking stuff.
Yeah. Well, and then in that Y line, I would be very clear on what's coming down the pike.
Yep.
And what the risk is.
Yeah, so well.
A little risk benefit in that line would be bad.
That's, that's to me a balance.
Okay.
I cut it. I do like that because if we ever down the road, our question is to, well, why didn't, well, why all of a sudden we haven't put money aside? Well, we offered it up two years ago. If you go back and look at that slide, it was there.
Hundred percent.
Rather than saying, oh, well, I don't remember someone saying it. It was in the slide.
Yeah.
So I, I do like that idea.
I think the point that we need it, which is why we're asking for it.
Right.
But we understand you want to to better know how this impacts you or doesn't impact you.
And it's, and if they have the information and they still cut it, that's.
That's, that's, that's on you.
That's the legislative body. But I, we're, we're, right, we have to at least tell them the why.
Right.
And and then that's.
And why we want to use the funds that you already approved.
Right.
Mm hmm.
Well, I think.
That we were so good with our budget that there is a little bit of reserve.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
This is a prudent expenditure.
Yeah, I agree.
We're here that quite often to determine, you know, prudence. We take a prudence test. I mean, look at this stuff and this is what, you know, we recommend.
Well, I think the storyboard is the maintenance fund because we've got the the ten year storyboard of, okay, we, we collectively, the town saved.
Yeah.
Spent this money and then we s- we spent out of the fund.
Yeah.
We built it up and then we spent.
Right.
So we've done H VAC, we've done signing, we've done all these projects and we're the benefit of of this plan. So I think that's kind of a storyboard that possibly sells the other.
Yeah, yeah.
You have a boom tracker.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's fair. Thank you. This is.
All right, so we'll, we'll be somewhere, somewhere more on that.
Yep.
Little bit of sound, which would be great.
That's a good, it's like a drive right through to the door.
Yeah, that's good. All right, and then next, this is just the the actual one article for the maintenance fund and then uh I did talk to Roger about the um H VAC duct replacement project. And he's still working on stuff this year. Um and the he's a little concerned about the pricing for phase two. Um so actually, Steve, if you want to go to we, we're putting in a placeholder of a hundred thousand, but we're not a hundred percent sure of that. Yeah, and actually go to the next slide. So what, what he's suggesting, um because we also have these other projects, the expansion of your facilities plan, so the ADA ramp, water system design, the other H VAC equipment. He wants to do uh a deep dive and do a refresh of your plan. Because really, all we have identified after this H VAC is the playground equipment and the fire alarm system. So because of that, and we're putting in, you know, some less money or requesting some less money for this year. He wants to push off the phase two of the H VAC duct replacement to FY twenty five, but very early, like that summer. And potentially look at some of these other projects and how much, see how much those might cost. And um possibly do those in FY twenty four. So maybe be able to spend like fifty thousand on something in FY twenty four. So it this, you know, this, it's been great with these first few projects, but he feels like he just wants to do a deep dive and really look at what the needs are going to be.
Okay.
Um over the next ten years.
Okay.
So we're just pushing off phase two a little bit longer and he feels fine with that. He said, or potentially, depending on how the bid comes in, maybe um maybe splitting it out again and doing two phases of phase two, so phase two and a phase three.
So where was phase two originally?
It was in FY twenty four.
In twenty four.
So, yeah, so we're just pushing that a bit, but early on, like it's summer work, so.
Let's see, is it, is there a big concern or a supply chain issue?
No, he's, it's okay, but just with the unknown variables of some of the other projects that we're talking about.
Okay.
Um, he just feels like, you know, we're in good, good enough shape right now, completing phase one. He's still working on it this year. Um and he does have that bid out for phase two, so so we'll see how it comes in. But he, he just, he feels like there's these other projects that.
So it's more of a re-priorization.
A timing and a bright prioritization. Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, so.
Not, I'm sorry, Pete.
No, I, I guess I, maybe I missed something, but I know that we, we discussed going down to thirty five this year.
Yeah.
This is the other ass.
Yeah.
You got it. But then we're back up to fifty.
Mm hmm.
Or the following year.
And I guess my concern is that.
Yeah.
I, I don't see the economy changing for a quarter. People are going to be receptive to us all of a sudden ramping back up again. And I I guess I'd be interested to see what this timeline Excel looks like if we kept it at thirty five from twenty five through thirty one and what the impact would be. I'm a quick man, I could do it, but
Yeah.
I'm not so sure going right, ramping right back up to fifty is where I want to be, but I could be a lone soldier on that. And I know it's going to impact what we can do and how much we can spend, but if we're going to have these other articles and and buckets of money that we want to set aside, there, there's only so much there from the taxpayer. So.
What we're trying to do is is not drop low a hundred. Which I, I'm in agreement with.
Yeah.
And so I think it's, um, I think we can look at it and then see where we are. And we also, I think, one that we're taking a pretty refreshing look at fund balance. A hundred and fifty, the fund balances are much more real estimate.
Yeah.
And hopefully, you know, this year, we had to eat a hundred fifty thousand dollars of tax impact on reduction of fund balance. With a one hundred fifty this year, we'll get some tax relief. Because it's only the delta now. Anything more than a hundred fifty next year plus, this year, anything less than three hundred was an impact on the taxes. So I think I think we'll be a little bit better with fund balance next year and we'll see where we are. But this is just a, a, a projection. And if next year where we are, we have to do some things around. We just really just want to stay with that hundred in the bank. I could hop a boiler or we pop something expensive. I don't want to be this budget.
Yeah, I'd rather, to me, this is more conservative approach. Just leave it as is and then we'll adjust.
Yeah.
Because I, I, I do appreciate what he's saying.
Yeah. But like.
We can look next year.
Yeah, and reassess.
See where we're at. And and Roger always does a really good job of trying to find ways to to save money, so. All right, and then then this is your uh school renovation addition study warrant article. Um, so we'll have to take a look at that other sheet because this isn't on that sheet because it's not an existing reserve, so I can retitle that maybe and to get that on there, to have the impact of what we wanted on the other slide.
Yeah, this isn't.
Because it's not an existing reserve.
It's not a fund.
It's not.
It's a one time.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's one, exactly. So I've been keeping it separate.
Okay, all right.
So I don't want them to think this is a continued.
Yeah, no, that's true, yeah.
So.
All right.
Another question, I hate to go ahead and comment. I'm chatting with Steve, I'll keep tonight. So is, is this where we want to grab that enrollment slide and bring that to here versus where?
Yeah. I wonder if there's some ways of reordering a few.
Or you can duplicate.
I think a few things might need rearranged.
Yeah, we can re, yeah, however you want to reorder is.
So that, and while we're talking about, I use the word storyboard again. My concern is that like the first or second, and this is not a criticism, first or second slide we had up there was eight point one percent.
Mm hmm.
And my fear is that people are going to literally just shut down or whatever when they see that slide. So my question is, do we, do we shuffle and put the revenue slides at the top? Walk through all the expenditures and where the impacts are and all that, and then this is where we end up at eight point one or six point three, one of the two numbers. My, my concern is that first slide with full year twenty four, eight point one default, six point three is gonna, people are just gonna.
It is not any good news anywhere. Revenue doesn't help you.
But, but I, I actually, when I first saw that too, I kind of had a little bit of the same concern. Typically, when I run through these, we usually go through what we call global goals and objectives. So we kind of voice track a lot of stuff before we even get the numbers. We say, okay, the budget, you know, before we see the budget, these are the main drivers. We're seeing significant costs and purification, all this stuff.
Mm hmm.
So when you get to that piece, they're already I, I guess it may, it doesn't maybe necessarily soften the blow, but it kind of gets them all right, in the frame of mind that, all right, I'm going to see some material increase, but some of it, we have no control.
Right.
And I think that's what needs to come across because unless, as you've seen, the majority of the budget is, is salary and tuition.
Yeah.
There's, there's nothing.
So the, yeah, it, that's my point. Unless you're willing to do something here, there's really not much that we could do.
So how about flipping slide five and six? But six with the major stories. I'm not even, I, I'm not there with the major stories like does, other, because it's placed, it'd be either, it needs to go like right after the intro slide to kind of guide like this. Right.
Major is the budget.
It's, this is, this is what is, is prompting the change. Hmm, it doesn't, so the only, maybe this is my scientific writing brain. It doesn't follow the flow of what we go over. So like increasing A O M A M S commission, I guess it does to some degree, but we're going to address that also with doing the evaluation, like it kind of hits into two places. So I almost wonder. I don't know. I, I think that there's a way we can, I think contextualizing is what you all are looking for, and I think that that can help. Because I, I'm concerned with people immediately shutting down and then not hearing anything else that happens.
We wanted it, they didn't want the good news. They wanted the facts.
Yeah, they don't want the, well, okay, let me, let me put it into context. There were two people who attended our community listening session. So those two people who attended, um who represented the community, both were quite clear saying that they felt that it's better to be brutally honest, instead of painting, you know, this gorgeous picture of what happens here, they already know that beautiful things happen here. But they want to understand what is coming their way and what we're asking, what, what's going to be the impact to them from a financial perspective.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're, at least from my perspective, I don't think we're looking to, you know, mislead or.
No.
By the way, I, I.
In the past, there was, um, the superintendent or the administration gave a beautiful summary of the things that happened here, and it was great. But I think maybe that was um not received well all the time by all the people. Thinking that, you know, you're, you're showing us this flashy thing and then you're hitting us with the, with the.
But you're, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't.
So it was just feedback from the community that we received and I, we did not receive other feedback from the community, so that's I'm grateful.
Well, this is the good part of the album, like.
Yeah.
Do you think that moving the major stories earlier would?
You know, again, because people are going to see it, and I agree with Pete, people are going to see that eight point one, they're not going to like it. They're not going to like it. We don't like it.
Yeah.
We don't like it. We don't like it, but we know what the reality of it is. We know what the major driver of the eight point one percent is.
And that's.
I see it, you know, most of it salaries.
Yeah.
And tuition. Okay, that's the bulk of it. Beyond that, out of that entire eight point one percent, this is what's left over.
Right.
So there's, there's no good way of doing it, so.
Well, I mean, I think you know my style. If I'm, I'm the one who's leading this off.
Yeah.
I, because I get nervous in front of people, I will start off conversational.
Yeah.
Right, to say this is what we're, this is what we're working with, this is what we're going to be talking about.
Yeah.
So if the major story slide was the first slide, it would give talking points.
Yeah.
If, if someone else feels passionate about leading it off, I am A O K with that. That's why I wonder if it would help to have that move earlier to be like, look, this is what we're dealing with. This is what we've done in the effort. Like, we've worked very hard to narrow that sliver between the two budgets as closely as possible.
Yeah.
And I think that that gives the context to help as much as possible. It, truth be told, it, the story is not different from other years.
Mm hmm.
We have obligations that we have to meet, period. That, yeah, it's not comfortable, but we have obligations that we have to meet, and we're trying to do the right thing for some of our staff who are underpaid.
Which, what this budget does, it can, it weathers a difficult storm due to things not being controlled, inflation, special education costs, and market availability of staff
Hmm.
by maintaining what has proven to work. This class size, this staffing configuration, this leadership and this approach, this is a commitment to continue what has proven to be successful.
Yeah, you said that so well. Would you like to lead us?
No, exactly. I'm a stranger in the woods. Um, that's what this is. It's eight point one to continue a proven public education approach in a very small town. And you're, you, this is what you are coming to me, and I say, working with this board, is that you found a strong public school system and are willing to stand up in front of people. So this is what we need to maintain and it's working. And if you break it, it does have impact on property values, the attractiveness of the community, and it has concomitant impact. So um, I think that's the story. The story is it works and it's there this year with some storms that it happened in a small school, but if we fund the reserves, and if we go on that, we will be more prepared for the future storms. But if they don't fund the special, they don't put twenty grand in special interest, it's going to get worse.
Hmm.
If you don't maintain these buildings, it's going to get worse.
Hmm.
But um and that's what you're doing, trying to prepare for the next storm while weathering this one and maintaining high quality, effective small public school, which is not easy in New Hampshire when they don't fund education.
Hmm, right.
So I commend you for this, and I think you're ready for it, and I think you have the evidence that this community has responded to that, though it is of high cost, it is of high value.
Hmm.
And sometimes costs don't match value. You have cost matching value in the Montville School District. And it's precious and it's, it is fragile. You tilt a couple of ways, all of a sudden, two teachers leave and you hire, all of a sudden, we're in trouble, you know? But you're strong, this community, and you have evidence. So I think you're right.
If you want to give me a pep talk and go over me, I'll do the, that first slide for you.
You don't need a pep talk.
I do. Do you, but having this that enrollment slide.
What's that?
Put that enrollment slide down there as well, like maybe.
I duplicate the enrollment slide, but I would keep it where it is, but also put it, I would add it.
Yeah, you copy, copy it in, but um I would say if you, if you're thinking of shuffle, I would move five and six in front of the summary, but Steve makes valid points. I mean, we've, we've got the story, we've got the.
Evidence.
Exactly, got the results.
You do?
But that was my concern.
It's gonna be tough, man. I don't, I don't regret it. But this is what's going on. Right now in the district that I was pretty fond of, it's going eight point nine percent when I was there. They didn't let me get over three.
Hmm.
Now I walk out the door, they got eight point nine.
Here's the thing that I'll say about it. I don't like the number, but I'm not uncomfortable presenting the information because of what you said, because this is solid. Uh, you, I don't like it, but it does not make me uncomfortable to say this is what it is. And I don't think any of us should be uncomfortable saying that. We've done a very good job. You have done a very good job. You have done a very good job, Mr. Left later with your staff, of making sure that this budget is where it needs to be.
And you're moving the needle a little bit for savings to weather the next one. You're not being a bystander saying, we can't do anything about this. No, we can't. We can put twenty grand in the special trust. We can put fifteen grand in the health insurance trust, and we can start talking about looking at a tax rate stabilization fund that is critical in this little community. Because if one year you have four hundred thousand dollars left in fund balance, you may want to have a vehicle to save that money for the next rainy day.
Mm hmm.
Because I think the vast majority of people want state banks. You don't want things.
Yeah, I agree.
But I know I could be all wet, though.
No, I agree, because I'll take three percent all day every year as opposed to zero.
Right.
Then seven percent another year, then four, it's, you can't budget to that.
Exactly.
You can't.
George, exactly. And that's, and hopefully next year, the community, you know, we do all the homework and you get some feedback. George, exactly, and that's, and hopefully next year, the community, you know, we do all the homework and you get some feedback, the community, it's a good question to be, I respect the vote.
All right, okay, so we're gonna shuffle those final slides, thank you.
I've moved major slides up to right off the bat. And, and then you wanna be your operating budget review?
I'm on set a major story, it's the story. It's the story.
Yeah.
It's the story.
It is.
Sorry, I mean, there's one story, there's a lot of components of the story, but there's, there's, there's one story. And that story is, it's been rough seas, it's like a fall, so this isn't incompetence, this isn't, he's wonderful, no, no, Dan. We care about kids.
So we have the story, yeah. Now.
Yeah.
And then do you wanna go right into the operating budget review?
Yeah, that's the story.
Yeah, I think so.
And it kind of sets the table. And if you wanna do a slide, some, you know, and this is just a dry run, but it's working.
Yeah.
Now, do we? And BBS, and we have village schools.
Yeah.
Three bullet points, um, the, you know, the feedback from the state. Um, and around us is eighty nine percent of teachers and community members are happy, I just made that out, but there is, there is a vehicle out there that I've been looking at.
Can we get some of those data points as a slide, anything?
Yeah, I don't know how many participated in the survey, but there was a survey through the Department of Education of, you know, parents and community members and staff.
Yeah.
If it's relevant.
Yeah, we can, okay, I mean, I was looking at it, um, last, looking at one of the districts data last week, because I've had an interesting conversations with one of the oversight financial committees and whatever.
Do we have, quickly from our, we don't have any additional headcount returns in two two or admin, so can we go back a little bit to the story slide?
Yeah.
So where we say, cause I want people to understand that as well, because we're not, it's not a bloated budget, we're not increasing. You know, this is just to your point, it's a prudent budget, we're maintaining what. Yeah, so when we, so where we say.
Adding the positive.
Yeah, look, competitive, we're offering competitive wage and maintain our current staffing levels.
No changes.
No changes.
Yeah.
Zero, so people could say, well, what are you doing, are you adding it? No, no, this is. So we're trying, that drives all the point, cause I just lost a guy, and we gave a significant increase, you left R H Y. And now I have to go out and find somebody. Now, looking at our budget, we probably gonna defer on some of this stuff, because I know to go out and get somebody to replace them, it's another twenty five percent.
I know.
Twenty five percent right off the bat. So I think it's important to let people know that we are offering competitive wages while maintaining our current staffing levels.
Yeah.
I, I think maybe even saying no changes.
Or, yeah.
Explicitly, like no changes on staffing goals, cause I feel like they do last two.
Yeah, yeah, and that's gonna be your natural eight point seven, what do you, what's?
What were we saying?
We've already got that slide.
Oh, yeah.
Part of the major.
Story.
Out in front and clear.
Because we're talking about non-union, but we don't make any mention that literally in here, we're not, you know, growing. Staff. This is just to your point, we're maintaining.
Right.
What we have.
It could be a bullet under competitive wages if you want.
Yeah, how, how are you guys?
Public hearings is a drive.
Yeah. So think about this, um, think about this slide and maybe send me some feedback and I can ping it around.
That was just the one that jumped out at me, because we talked about ninety, but hey, we're not adding it.
Yeah.
Let's talk about.
Well, take a look at it, give some feedback, and then, um, I can toss it to Ms. Facey and she can. Yeah, sorry, we're just giving you work to do on some bullet points. Yeah, I don't know, no, we can, so we're gonna collect a little feedback over the weekend and then.
Perfect.
That will be great, yeah, I'm taking some notes, but yeah, that would be good.
That's a great idea.
And essentially, we're just adding some good story.
Just, just a little tweets, this is good.
You're right, and all, this is all bad story.
Well, it's.
Yeah, it is, okay. So then, just in terms of order, do, do you want to move? The executive summary to the end?
Or, I think they're gonna expect budget first.
I think they are.
I don't actually, I don't want anybody to take one second, you guys are trying.
Yeah, I would leave that.
You guys are about as transparent.
Okay. So.
Yeah, I think that just helps us to set the tone.
Okay.
Maybe we could put an emoji next to the eight one.
My daughter's little sticker.
Are you the puppy?
So that's down there. All right, so I think we're at, um, yeah, right before that, Steve, was just the info on the renovation edition. Yep, so just some backup there, and then the warrant article for a student with disabilities, warrant article for health and dental. And then this is just the, um, a comparison. And then just your process.
Wow, we're getting further down that, this is my favorite. We started.
Started before that.
Where's the highlight today? I did change that, but I, I, I fixed that, cause I'm making this your presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So we're getting close.
Yeah.
So, do, can I ask the question about article four?
Yeah.
So I feel like, um, so what we're giving here is word on article, which is great, and the element projections, and then when I look at the scope. If I did not know anything, I would look at that and go, well, what are we looking at, what are we pricing, what are we doing?
Yeah.
Um, are we just?
I think we need, um, definitely verbally, but I think a Y slide would be a good idea. Why, 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 why are we asking for this?
And like, what specifically are we investigating, all, like, what are all the things that we are investigating?
So in the article, it's gonna introduce that, it says renovation edition.
I don't think that's gonna be enough.
Right, that's the frame.
Yeah, yeah.
Renovation in addition, either, I mean, if, you know, Meg would love right there on preschool program. If you're, um, so that's an addition, plus obviously seventh and eighth grade.
Yeah.
And plus, if the Roman hits, as Nesdaq says, you're gonna need some just for increased capacity.
Right, yeah, so I, so I added a Y slide, I added a Y renovation edition slide, and I will chew that up a little bit over the weekend.
Yeah.
See if any, if you've got.
Yeah.
Yep. So, yeah, I just put that in as a placeholder, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's really important there.
I just think it's gonna come up a lot.
And especially for people who can't attend, and they're looking at the side deck, I want to know.
It was already.
Next stage, it's plus, that's right, you've already had long school buses.
Yeah. But also being clear that this is limited in scope, I think people are very fearful of us that we're running headlong into a specific solution. And that this is not moving forward any solution, this is literally putting a price tag on multiple solutions, I think that's a part that I.
I would love for you to jot down a couple of little. And I think that the outcome of middle school study committee was we can't make a recommendation because we don't know whether we can price addition on this school. And if we can, how much it would cost, and then looking at enrollment, tack that on, and then we might need an addition no matter what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. And we don't get, we don't get any, uh, I don't know what's here, but any grant funding or any, uh, anything for studies and stuff like that? No, I kinda knew the answer to that, but. Figured I asked.
But all this work, it does get ready for bill gates. Yeah, that's what this is, this is background for bill gate application, having an engineer do it.
Oh, cause then you can go back at.
Like you'll decide to, if they're gonna say it costs four million dollars.
Now, what?
So you can just roll it in.
Yeah.
Potentially, but if not, you don't, you end up.
I know a lot about that.
And you also get a good information, if, if this is loaded down, you'll have it down, because then you're gonna focus on when you roll the tops.
Yeah.
Cause it's, it's, the reason why I do a renovation is, is web safety and space.
Unless you wanna start putting trailers on them.
Trailers that never leave.
That never leave.
Never leave.
Every place I've known, it's like, oh, we're only gonna, never leaves.
Okay, article six, we're good with that as well? That was one I wanted to have questions about, okay. Okay, so we're good on that, so if you have any suggestions, recommendations, ping them to me in an email, maybe by Saturday, and then I'll make sure that we get the team. Okay.
All right, so you, you're gonna get some stuff and send it to me, and we'll make some adjustments, kindness.
We'll do some pull-ups on this stories page, and I'll do some, I'll do the actual simulation now of this.
And you're in here, so you can see as we make, okay, it's perfect.
What means? Where is that gonna be?
It said library, are we really?
Library or?
We should, especially in the hearing is in the M P R, and the M P R is. Challenger invites, so let us focus. We prepare for best, which is a lot, should we do public hearing here and deliberative in there? Six in there is just.
This is better than five.
Maybe we could try that.
We can do two, four, six, eight, ten, we can go fifteen here, easy.
It's gonna be Murphy's Law, that the years we do it here.
It's gonna be very.
Hundreds will.
Well, you know, this is just now.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, why don't we say that we're gonna do it in here, and then, and then if we have a crowd, we can, yeah, that would be delightful.
Yeah, the acoustics are much nicer.
Okay, you will, okay. I'll be here, okay.
Is Jess gonna be here?
I don't know, I'll have to check.
Sure.
Okay, okay. Um, so do you need us to vote on the warrant articles? That's what's on our agenda, or to vote on warrant articles?
Yeah, that would be great.
So, yeah, so do you just need a, to just vote to accept the warrant articles as presented?
Yep.
So can I have a motion to accept the warrant articles as presented?
I will make a motion to accept the warrant articles as presented.
Thanks so much, do we have a second?
One second.
Thanks, any discussions, bearing that on a favor? Thank you.
Nice work, guys.
Did we have additional discussion on the deliberative session, or do you feel comfortable? I feel pretty comfortable. If you've got anything that you want, you'll.
No, but you'll have a good read as, next Wednesday, and then if you wanna cut the wire for the deliberative, go imagine a few more people there.
Yeah, okay.
You'll all.
Yeah, we'll have some extra slides for that, too, some. Okay.
And I, just let me know what are any, are we like meeting up to play?
Yeah, do you want someone to speak at the beginning? I know Christine did that last year, I think, so.
Speak. Probably, and we have done that in the past, so I mean, I would welcome if you've got some, something. Based on community feedback, I would say maybe something brief.
Yeah.
Quick state of state.
Yeah, but I don't think you need slides or anything, I think, you know, I mean, if you would like.
No, I'm good.
Slide support, but I found it like two hours before, so mine was brief.
If you think Christine would be better suited to do this, I'm not. She has a.
He could let you work that out on extra cell, you could rock.
It's a stranger in the woods.
So that's for deliberative, but you're one stranger, Steve, that's the thing, you're, you're a trusted.
Happy to, happy to, but we.
Yes. Our trusted colleague here, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, really great work. Um, did we have any other discussion about the deliberative, was it?
That's a separate line item, but I don't think we, do we?
No, the only quick thing I mentioned, I, I, I think I included in board notes, or I know you have two different packets, good work. Um, for me, um, the petition warrant article, did you catch that, that there is?
What it, yeah.
So very quickly, that, um, the town of Amherst, the Amherst School District and the Southern Cooperative School District. Have received certified petition warrant articles to establish a tax cap in those two communities, so that is. It's not this school district, so it is not, you have the oversight of this process is not the Mount Vernon School Board. I let you know though, because if the Amherst School District had to go under a tax cap, that would impact. The educational experience, or just the Amherst School District would, no, but Amherst because of the two.
Oh, right.
So you would be sending students to a much differently funded organization. If they have a tax cap for your tuition, but it would also impact the South Heagan.
With the next, the portionment as well, correct?
Correct, yeah, but, and it's like, some people.
They have a smaller slice because of the caps, theoretically.
Um, and it, it's, it's a big threshold to pass.
Ask for more than a certain amount, which means that it's.
It would control the cost, which would control your, your.
Your portion also would be controlled.
Yeah, but if, what if the actual dollars in terms of?
Doesn't impact the S A U.
It.
But.
But whether it's being negative tax impact to us.
Follow, you kind of know, because I'm having less dollars coming in.
If Amherst can only raise a certain amount.
Right. But the expenses are the expenses.
They would have to pay the S A U assessment.
Exactly.
So.
So they would, okay, all right, so that would mitigate that, okay, got it. That would be my only concern, because.
There's a lot of concerns.
There's less going in, so the, the.
Doesn't change.
The pie is the pie.
Yeah.
And I just wanna give you a heads up, we will, there will be a public hearing during a week of the February twenties. In Mount Vernon, about the Southern Cooperative School Day, and I can let you know, wanna come and see it, and when, there's a community member. The South Heagan School Board will be discussing this and making a statement, the South Heagan Advisory Finance Committee will be discussing this and making a statement. The Amber School District will be discussing on their, on that piece. Um, it's more of just a heads up, and I, I can't look you on the eye and say this would have no impact on what you do as a school. Um, that's, that's just not true, even though you're not part of this decision-making, but if a tax, you're sending, you're right, you're sending tuition to a school with a cap. It would be a different, it would be, it would change. Now, some people might say change for the better, because it will lower your cost, but if you're looking at educational outcomes. More of just giving a heads up, and I'll invite you to the public hearing on to a quick word, it's a fun calendar, it's a very specific statute, because it has its own public hearings schedule, even after, as Amy said today. So we're gonna get some legal advice to make sure, but it's, it's pretty clear in the statute. Um, and I, that's, I just wanted to notice that to you and give you a heads up on, so you're not, because it, it is important that, I believe you know.
Yeah, okay.
I don't want you to.
Thank you.
That's it, I'm sorry, I.
Information. Any other questions on that? No, okay. Uh, we have a, well, first reading here, um, of the policies that were in the policies, um. The policy packet that were recently reviewed at the S A U, um. We typically view that as a second read here, so I don't know if everybody is comfortable with that, the summary sheet is here, we've got, most are, um, to be adopted and. Most are to be adopted and one is to be rescinded, so, uh, is everybody comfortable viewing that as a second read and just, um, voting? To adopt and then to rescind the ones that are on the list?
Yes.
We comfortable with that? George, you?
I haven't read through all of them, so.
So would you like to hold?
I mean, we have, if you guys are comfortable, the budgets are staying, and you guys.
No, I mean, it's okay if you wanna, if you wanna, well, we can view this as the first read and come back.
Yeah, we just.
Okay. Yep, um, so just F Y I, there in, in the, um, packet, there is a summary that says like which ones are for adoption here.
Yeah, I, I, I saw, I just.
Yep. Um, and then the one to be rescinded, um, is I H C D L E B, and that's just because we don't have students in that grade level. So it just makes sense to not have it here. Yeah, but happy to hold that, and then maybe we can get Jessica to go on that as well, so we're gonna hold on the policy. Adoption, um, one thing that I, we are up to public comment, two of two, um, and the one thing that I would share as a, I guess, sort of member of the public, is that we have some, um. I believe all board members received a notification from the Amber School Board about their listening sessions. Um, in the community, so I'll, today I'll send that to you, and maybe we can just enter that in with our minutes. Um, but just as a community member sharing that, uh, there are at least three listening sessions that are scheduled, um, in Amherst. On January twenty fourth at six o'clock, uh, which will be covering educational and instructional impact of their proposed facility project. Um, January twenty fifth at six o'clock will be covering the safety and town and school benefit of the project. And February first at six o'clock will be covering financing. Um, additionally, the Emperor School Board is, um, conducting or hosting, um, listening sessions in people's homes. So I think, you know, if you are, um, a community member, um, in our neighboring community, you may have the opportunity to attend those, um. And I don't. Um, it says that one or two board members will be, um, helping to facilitate those, so.
Um, it says that one or two board members will be, um, helping to facilitate those, so. That's just kind of an informative F Y I.
And we do have one person on Zoom.
Okay, great.
If you wanna offer.
Yeah, absolutely, so we are in that public comment time, so if our, um, participant on Zoom has any. Um, comment or would like to address the board, we are here to listen. No pressure.
I just ran her out.
Okay, um, do we think we're good? So, thank you so much, um, do we have need for non-public? Um, any other board business that?
I would, just real quick, I know we all wanna. I, I was intrigued by the cast summit portion of the middle school report. Do either of you know much about it, I just was wondering if this program was kind of expound, expanding beyond just the initial. Group of kids that I see in the picture, and it seemed like a pretty good. It's really. But I'm just wondering if there's enough touchpoints, are they gonna keep trying to get more and more kids?
They are, and they come back with action steps. Uh, and it, it is connected to, it is, uh, CAS receives, the, the, the milk organization in a surrounding area. Receives funds for its drug assistance. And it's really great, and for a while at my past job, when I was assistant supervisor, I was on their monthly calls. Okay, exactly, some of the work I did in my past life was connecting to interagency partnerships and trying to get more support for schools, so I got to know a little bit of the people that I went to. With our social organization to one event, so very strong organization, um. They, Kim does a great job, I've already with this, and you're aware, I see student leadership opportunities expanding, it's good stuff. And I was really glad that they brought a significant number of kids, so thank you for noticing.
Yeah, just, I mean, it's just a bullet point, but it seemed like it was. Just hoping that something like that is gonna grow.
Um, one other thing that we should probably mention is that tomorrow it is four forty-five is the public opportunity to. Meet one of our superintendent candidates, um, where is that?
High school, thank you, um, one of the double classrooms, I don't wanna say the room, because it will be.
Look at you, Pete, um, so that is an opportunity for the community to go and to meet that candidate. Um, and then the board, uh, interviews follow that and for those who can attend, great. Um, so I, I, I don't believe we have any additional business, so we can entertain a motion to adjourn at seven thirty-four.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor? Great job, thank you so much.